I'm going to call open session to order. Join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I need approval of the agenda, please.
No move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda is approved. Um, we have our list for patron comments. We have one. Patron Judy, would you like to speak, please?
Yes, I'm very excited. I'm just excited to be here. So, I'm very excited to be here. And I'm just glad that this is happening. This is my second time here. Things that we, we want to do the most to push. Why do we want? Like, how do I work? So, I pray that extra help for the children when they're doing work events that we, just extra emotional help, you know, extra food and clothing and whatever they do. And we keep them warm, keep them safe, keep them healthy. Um, bless all these teachers here and all the ones that aren't not present in, you know, the whole school system, every worker here just in the local school. Listen to, 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 to the protection of their lives, to keep them safe, as long as, with stuff going on, jobs out there, just, for us to protect the board and keep us healthy through these work events. And then, I pray to give to the board and, um, and to say thank you for being on board too, and thank you for all the work that they do for us and all the hours they give to them. We definitely appreciate it a lot. So, I pray guidance upon the board here now, given the facts they need to know, the knowledge they need to know to gain wisdom, it needs to be required or to come to correct decisions for bettering the school system and bettering the children. So, it's about each child is so important to your heart. So, may you take, not, not ever take it for granted, how important teachers are for the children who are important in school districts, correct you. So, bless each and every decision made here, have your continued guidance upon behaviors here and bless their, their lives personally to in your hands with the things, the things they should. It's about them, they're feeling pressure and we just do it also, um, choose as many as we can.
Um, we need approval of the consent agenda items. Does anybody have any warrants of anything to abstain from?
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Consent agenda has been approved. Now, we're going to go to the gym for our recognitions. Okay, we're moving on to new business and action item. I'm going to do a roll call vote to schedule a closed session to discuss student and personnel matters as provided by revised Missouri Statute six ten point oh two one, sections three, six, thirteen, and fourteen at the conclusion of the open session.
Second.
Rich?
Aye.
Melissa? Kevin?
Aye.
Dominic?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy? Okay, our insurance is recommendations.
So, the Southern Welfare Committee broke up into subcommittees, one of which was look at the insurance, because this was our three-year reavow point. Uh, we had two plans present to us. Uh, we decided to go with the OSBA plan. Understand that there was a six percent increase on premiums this year, but actually in the past two years, we've not had a premium increase. So, we did decide to go with the OSBA for medical, keeping the, all of our choices we have currently. And the only thing we did make a difference on was dental. We decided to go with Delta Dental as the other alternative, which was new to us this year, it was new to, they're new members last year, but existing members was new this year.
There was one of these plans that was highlighted, and the rest were not.
Okay, that was because there was a change in the, uh, the dental.
Okay.
It went up, I think, a hundred dollars.
But essentially, all the employees are, can choose which plan.
Right, you can choose any plan you want. There's the TPOs and there's the HSA plans. And we are very grateful that the district is still paying the six hundred fifty dollars a month up to maximum point on those plans. We're very appreciative of that. Yeah, that one you're looking at in the red, it was just a deductible change somewhere in there because of federal regulations.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? Motion, please.
I have a motion to approve the OSBA insurance bid for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Classes, thank you very much for making that. Appreciate it. Okay, we are up to our building CSET plans. Now, giving everybody a piece of paper to write down your questions, and we'll give those to them at the end, okay?
We have the, I think it's just in this book.
You do not have this presentation.
But we have the primary building, and we have each building's part.
Yes, correct. So, this is their presentation. That's the plan. They're going to go into like this test. This is slideshow.
All right, thank you very much for having us tonight. We're excited to share our goals and pieces of the building. So, I'm going to kick this off. I am a very small portion of this, um, but kind of leading into it. First of all, I just, I want to, um, reiterate that our focus is goal one tonight on the CSET, which is instructional, uh, performance by all of our students. And so, that's what you are going to hear about tonight, because that's what we're here for ultimately. Um, so our focus is something that we call tier one instruction. So, I wanted to kind of show you a graphic of what that means. So, here is what we do in the classroom. Tier one is applicable, it works for eighty to ninety percent of our students. At least it should, when we do it well. We have some, now, all students receive this. This is given to a hundred percent of our students, um, and it's successful for eighty to ninety percent. But we have some students who need some extra support some of the time, and so we call that tier two instruction. And that's where they may be pulled out for some additional help during the day. They may get some after-school help. Um, there's some different things that we do instructionally. We may reteach it a different way, and that's about five to ten percent of our students. And then, we have what's called tier three, which is a very small percentage of our students that get very intensive interventions. And that might be some of our special education students, some things like that. So, when we talk about tier one instruction, this is our focus, because we know that all of our kids get this. And looking at that, one of the, one of the areas we need to realize is if we get behind in this, if we aren't doing it well, we start to have to do this more for the tier two. And it's a very, um, it takes a lot of extra assistance often for students to catch up to the point where they're proficient at a tier one level. And so, we don't want to get to the point where we're basically doing all tier two and trying to intervene. And we feel like that has gotten a little off balance, perhaps, in the last couple of years. So, some things that we are doing, that you're going to hear about from our administrators, is we are really working on our alignment to Missouri learning standards and how we assess and how we instruct, making sure we're at the right level of rigor and the method of our questioning, and that's still a work in process. And that is something that we started in August. Some of the support that we are doing that I wanted to share with you tonight is, as you know, we have been looking at some instructional materials and, and trying to provide that to our teachers. They deserve high-quality materials. And so, we have done that at the K-5 level with our ELA materials. Um, as you know, this is our second year with our ICKLA materials. We are looking at, um, adopting for six through eight, grade six through eight next year with a program that we're going to share with you at our, uh, May board meeting. And also, parents can come in and review those as well. And then, we're also looking at K-8 math. Now, I know that, you know, we've been using Tang Math for three, four years in some areas, but that is an area that we felt like we needed to look at, a more robust, more extensive program, um, keeping a lot of those principles that we have already adopted and gotten professional development on, but being able to provide those teachers, um, more extensive materials. Um, at the six to eight level, we are looking at HMH into math. Um, and at the lower levels, we're looking at I Ready, um, which will be a really good alignment with, um, our reading and math diagnostic that we're looking at for next year as well. So, those are areas that we are reviewing right now, and we will, um, next year, begin to look at science and social studies and putting those, those materials into our teachers' hands. So, I wanted to share that with you before we move into the person.
First of all, I want to thank Jane, because she's letting me go first for the first time ever. Is that right? Usually, I'm stuck at the end, like the forgotten stepchild. Get back in the corner. It's kind of like my dad when I was a kid said, "Go back out in the middle of the street and play." So, for our building, you probably get tired of me saying this, you know, with twelve different programs that are so vastly different and unique, uh, it's hard to come up with some common academic goals in each program. Uh, we choose to focus on two, and if you've got a good mental picture of what the school district's APR report looks like, um, at the bottom of page one, the section that's still on performance, uh, there's a section on, um, success-ready students. Now, under success-ready students, there are two things. One's on assessment and one's on advanced credit. So, the career center does choose to focus on both of those areas, or we can help the district as a whole. Uh, you can see on the, the diagram on the screen, uh, shows the ACT work keys, which we focus on. All of our kids take the ACT work keys, uh, and a lot of what I'm going to say actually bleeds into the high school and what Mr. Schaefer is going to say as well. Uh, there are three sections on the ACT work keys. Okay, based on their scores, they get placed really in five categories. On the screen, it shows four. The National Career Readiness Certificate, NCRC, is awarded to any kid who scores in bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. Uh, there is a lower section beyond. The reason we choose to focus on silver, you're going to see in a second. It'll, it'll make sense on our district APR reports. But at the bottom, you can see where our seniors are either have performed or are currently performing. Last year's seniors, very good, eighty-three percent, and I think Mr. Hayden could probably back that up traditionally. That's about the ballpark figure where, um, the building performs at. This year's seniors, for whatever reason, they're knocking it out of the park. Okay, awesome. Um, there's a lot of positive peer pressure. Um, I'm not sure how it's happened, whether it's organic. Our teachers emphasize in it. Uh, sometimes if we wave a little carrot in front of the, a kid saying, "Hey, if you want to get back in the shop and work on that welding project, let's make sure and take that section just one more time and give it your very best." So, there's a lot, there's a lot of emphasis there, but they're, they're doing awesome. Uh, virtually every kid has scored silver or above. Uh, and then, we've got next year's, uh, group yet to be determined. One advantage that we have, that like a high school situation with a kid who takes the ACT, typically, that might be a one-shot deal. Some of our seniors are taking the ACT next month. Our advantage in the career center is we can get a kid in the fall of their junior year, test them in work keys in our embedded credit classroom in October, establish a baseline score. We purchased a curriculum that allows us to sit down with that student. Here's where you're deficient, okay? Here's where your strengths are. We can focus some lessons that are built in, then we reassess in the spring. Hopefully, by that point, they've reached silver. Some kids want to keep on going, so even in their senior year, they might test a third time in the fall of their senior year, or even a fourth time during the spring of their senior year. So, you can see, uh, the growth is really good. I did want to put something in your hand that I think will make it a whole lot more sense. Now, full disclosure. Uh, two days ago, I had a handout that was perfectly fine. It was pulled straight from the DCE manual. It had some, some parts circled, some stuff squiggled out, but my younger, cooler colleagues said we can do better than that, so we've got this graphic. What I want to point your attention to on this sheet is along the top row, where it says there's a point value under assessment and measurement description across. Essentially, every kid who graduates from Perryville High School will be assigned a point value for an assessment that they've taken. Okay, so, for example, if Craig, Jamie, and Kevin take work keys from me, and Craig takes the work keys, he scores silver. According to the chart, silver, go up. He, according to the state of Missouri, he's a point seven-five student in the assessment category. Okay? Jamie takes it. He gets a silver as well. He's still point seven-five. Okay, I want you to look then. If Kevin takes it and only gets a bronze, look how low his score is. It's a, it goes, it doesn't go down one notch. It goes down a couple notches to point two-five. The state, for whatever reason, disproportionately punishes students if they don't reach silver level. Okay? So, point seven-five, point seven-five, Kevin's at point two-five. You add those three guys up, divide by three, they're only scoring at fifty-eight percent. My building is now fifty-eight percent. So, you look down at the chart at the bottom of this sheet, my building's only at fifty-eight percent. The district is going to get five out of ten points. It's not good enough.
I'll take it again.
So, we take young Kevin, give him some targeted lessons, have him take it again until he, he pulls it out. Okay? So, in effect, you, you can see, that's, that's really the advantage.
I have my platinum here.
You've got your platinum. Yes. So, that's, that's the goal, and I think that makes it a little bit more sense about why we do what we do and why we reassess the areas we do. Okay, the, the second slide, there's a couple things. The actual graphic has nothing to do seemingly about IRCs. Our goal is we want eighty percent of our CTE completers to earn either an industry-recognized credential, something that's portable, uh, they've earned it, and they can take it anywhere in this, in this country and say, "I went through a program. It was in southeast Missouri. Here's my certificate that shows I have these skills." Okay, awesome. So, we want kids to earn IRCs or two stackables. Now, just pass that one around. That's exactly what you see on the screen, it's just not quite as blurred. This graphic, the only reason I'm sharing it with you is because almost everybody who's sitting at this table in their building, they touch on this career pathways graphic. Uh, really, and Emily, you said, even in the primary, their kids start looking at those career clusters and career pathways. By the time they get to Mr. Cowell's building, probably narrowing down a little bit more. That's where you're taking student interest inventories, some individual discussions with the counselor about what gets their interests in, what their strengths are, the ICAPS, which might come up here in a few slides. And then, by the time they get to Mr. Schaefer and myself, that's when you really start focusing in. So, that's a big-picture graphic. As a kid gets older, we'll start narrowing it down. So, how does that have to do with our focused academic goal two? Again, we go back to district APR, success-ready students. You've just seen the assessment category is worth ten points. The advanced credit portion is also worth ten points through our entire district. Here's where it will probably make you bang your head against the wall a little bit. Again, every student who graduates from Perryville High School will be assigned a point value in the advanced credit matrix. The hard part with this one is they either get a zero or they get a one. That's it. So, if a kid graduates high school and they either don't earn an IRC, don't earn two stackables, or they don't take a dual credit, uh, or enrollment class for Mr. Schaefer, they get zero, zero. Very difficult, kind of frustrating. So, in, in our building, in our career clusters, we do have mostly a pretty good chance to get kids an IRC or two stackables. Okay? Do you want to point your attention to the side on the le, lower left? Notice the difference? It's a much lower threshold that the state has established on the assessment sheet that you received a couple minutes ago versus this one. So, at the bottom left-hand corner, we can get full ten out of ten points if, and it kind of got shut off a little bit, forty-seven point eight percent of our students get an IRC, dual-credit class, or two stackables. Okay, so basically, one out of every two. Our goal could be fifty percent of graduating completers could earn an IRC, and we get ten, ten out of ten. We choose to raise the bar a little bit and kind of shoot for the moon, uh, but this one is much more difficult to obtain. And I will try not to take much more time, but I want you to get a feel for just what we do in my building. The document that you're getting is the guidance document provided by the state. Basically, they say, "Hey, Mr. Heck, you're in charge of the career center. You, you want your kids to get an IRC or a stackable. Here's a, here's a list of what they can do." So, I don't expect you to look through the whole thing, but point your attention, flip over, just to page one. Cluster one is agriculture. We don't have a block ag class, but we do have lots of kids in FFA, lots of kids who are taking four years of ag classes. The, has anybody noticed how many IRCs access does a kid have in the entire state of Missouri that counts for our APR? They can only take one of two IRCs. It's either MOAS or a vet assistant. That's tough. Well, the state says you can earn two stackables too and get full credit. The state only offers one. Okay? So, that really limits us. Okay, so we're not, we, we're going to do the best we can. And if you flip through that whole document, there are parts of it that are really, really frustrating. So, just so that you know, kind of on a, on a day-to-day or quarterly basis, how we handle things in our building, I sit down with the, the teachers in each program, and what you have in your hands now shows the programs and then either the IRCs that they have available or the stackables. So, right off the top, you can see agriculture. We do try to get our completers, our kids who take lots of ag classes, that MOAS IRC. That's the goal. Okay? So, as you let this kind of sink in, if you want to come back and ask any questions about this and what we do or why we do it, okay? Feel free to come back and just say, explain a little bit further, but that's our goal. All right. Thank you.
Okay, guys. Um, so, our high school goal, again, still focusing on goal number one, um, where we're focusing on students demonstrating continuous academic growth from multiple measures of success. Uh, so, I've got three kind of areas that we're focusing on, and it's really a, a back-to-basics approach. Um, Mrs., uh, Ms. Narrow, I think, mentioned a little bit earlier, essential standards. Um, I want to talk about that just a little bit more before we jump in too far, because I'm going to make reference back to essential standards several times. And I know we have a tendency to get into education talks sometimes, make too fast. So, um, essential standards in a nutshell, every single course in, uh, high school, every approved course, has a whole list of standards from the state of Missouri. Essential standards are selected by, uh, have been selected this year by our teachers going through and deciding what standards, five or six, seven for a four-year course, are absolutely essential for every single student in that course to master. And that's all students, whether they're college-bound or they're career-bound, whether they have an IEP, a 504, a behavior intervention plan. What is it that we want to guarantee, hang our hat on, every kid's going to master this before they leave here at the end of this year? And that's really, really vital, and it's going to be important in some of the plans I have for the next couple of years, um, with some other things. Uh, but those essential standards, we started out back in August, going through all of our core classes and identifying, okay, with alignment to, uh, our EOCs, and we'll talk a little bit more about EOCs in a bit. EOCs and, uh, as classes that serve as prerequisites or classes that are accumulating, know your algebra one, and then your geometry, then your algebra two. What do those kids have to have mastered in order to be successful moving on through high school, and then where to be successful for whatever they choose to do after high school? Basically, it's just boiling through all those standards to focus on just that really most important core. And by the end of this year, we'll have those identified for every single course offered in the high school. The next one, I'm going to drop straight down, our CFAs, which are Common Formative Assessments. And that's an acronym you guys have heard us, uh, use for several years now. Um, we are realigning our CFAs to specifically go along with those essential standards. So, we're doing less measurement, but it's more focused measurement, so we're using that for, to, in, in form, adjustments to our instructional strategies. Um, we heard some great PD over the summertime down in Papa Bluff, where the speaker asked very, very plainly and upfront, "If you're doing CFAs, you're measuring, but you're then not changing anything as a direct result, why are you measuring it?" And that's, and it seems very obvious in retrospect, but, man, we do a lot of assessing and a lot of measuring, and it doesn't always lead to direct change in instruction. So, reducing those down, realigning them to fit the essential standards and the EOCs that can then help us decide where we need to go. Um, the focus on tier one instruction, again, as Ms. Jane was talking about earlier, is part of that back-to-basics approach, where we're specifically working on tier one instruction for the essential standards, to make sure that everything is stacked up to lead into our, our EOCs and getting the teachers, the newer teachers and our veterans to kind of get back and focus on what is the, the most important pieces of each of these courses for the kids. I've just got the one handout. That's right behind my cards. So, when it comes to the EOCs, yeah, um, state assessment looks a little different than it does in those, uh, I'm sorry, let's get you that. And it does in the, uh, in the first through eighth grade. Uh, we just have the four areas. We've got, uh, English two, we've got algebra, we have government, and we have biology. Um, and there's not really anything to directly compare those two. It's not a year-over-year. Most of our EOCs are taken by sophomores, and our government are by our juniors. So, EOC scores fall directly under our performance piece with our APR. And, uh, this year, we're deciding to do a, a few things a little bit differently. So, this is going to look like a whole bunch of information, and it is. Um, I'll get to that in just a second, though. But to address some of the concerns with some of the scores, specifically English and math, and the two big pieces, as you saw on our building improvement plan that we're focused on, um, we're starting with, all of the, all of the EOC testing courses got charts like this, where I took the standards as they were scored on by all of our students. And you'll notice there's, uh, the percentage of points earned in twenty-twenty-four, and then just to the right of that, percentage of points earned in twenty-twenty-three. And that's organized by standards. There's a call number for the standard over to the left. That doesn't make a lot of sense unless you're a Spanish teacher. Uh, but then over to the right, it's a description of the standard itself. And we, I put these side-by-side with last year's scores and the year prior's scores, just so we can start to identify trends. And then, you'll notice it's color-coded to make it really easy for teachers to just glance at and say, "Ooh, this one's really light." For instance, down here on reading informational text, it was twenty-four and twenty-eight percent on that one in particular. Obviously, that's an area we need to shore up, but at the same time, you'll notice there are some standards, drop all the way down, reading literary text. Well, on this one standard, they were three times, they got twenty percent, thirty-nine percent, and fifty-five percent. All right, well, that's, that's quite a range in here, but there's several of those where it's all over the place, and it comes back to what type of question is it, how do they approach it, and that kind of thing. So, this is really to help teachers, again, identify, does So this is really to help teachers, again, identify, does this need to be added to our list of essential standards? And how can we shore up instruction in that area specifically? So kind of digging in and really putting our finger on where we can find those gaps in their understanding and their achievement. The second page is the same thing, but that's for algebra. We did have this for government and for biology, but I figured that was enough spreadsheets for one night, so I just got you a sample in here. But we get these out during our PLC meetings. We took a look at them, broke it all down after EOC scores come out. Of course, the teachers always like to see, how did their kids do and that kind of thing? But we try to focus more on overall, so that we can address any areas that maybe we're not hitting well enough, just within our curriculum as we're implementing at the time. Let's see here. So the other big thing that we're changing with our EOCs for the last, I'm going to say it's been eight or nine years, our EOCs, each session, which our biology and our government are both just a single session, those are anywhere from ninety to a hundred-and-twenty-minute-long exams, and they've taken those in the gymnasium in Macs. We bring in tables, the kids sit there, and you're there until the test is over. It kind of throws monkey wrench in the schedule. It's arduous at best. The English and Math EOCs are actually two sessions, each lasting ninety to a hundred-and-twenty minutes apiece. So they get a couple of days of that. This year, with some of the changes that are available at EOC now and help with some of the counselors, rebuilt the EOC testing schedule, we're not doing them in the gym anymore. They're actually going to be in their classrooms with their content teachers. And we're able to break that testing period up, so it's just going to be one class period at a time. They've got the ability to hit pause on their EOC, go on to the rest of their schedule, the rest of their normal day without messing everything up, and then come back the next day, a little refreshed, hopefully got some breakfast in the belly, and get back into the test. From what we've heard anecdotally, for most of the testing proctors, the kids really kind of fall off in terms of durability and grit once they get past that forty-five, fifty-minute mark, which you can imagine, high-stakes assessment when you're getting into an hour-and-a-half to two hours, that wears them down. So we're really optimistic that breaking it up, putting them back into a familiar setting, and giving them some breaks in between is going to help with that a lot, push through and do their absolute best instead of getting tired in the curriculum. Any questions on EOCs or anything of that nature? Okay. So the other piece that we're really focused on this year is our college and career readiness. And again, I've kind of got three big areas of focus. The School Links program, this one you guys remember, you all approved for us. We're in a three-year contract with them. We got started up in August. The School Links program, just quick review, it has that really robust college and career kind of search engine ability to it. There's all kinds of great information in there where the kids can fill out, they can go through different mini-assessments and surveys and things to figure out, what do they really want to do? What is the area they're going into? And that leads directly into the career clusters that Mr. Heck was talking about earlier. Additionally, we did send out, I know some of you probably got a couple of weeks ago an email from me that says, hey, your parent portal is ready, you can go ahead, your students have a claim code set up for you. So now parents can hop on, they can see the assessments their kids are taking, see what they're interested in, see what they're looking at. And then in the next couple of months, their ICAPs will also be built in there, so students, I'm sorry, parents can hop on and kind of see what their plans are for the next two, three, four years through high school. We had our mid-year check-in with School Links last month. We meet with them every month via Zoom in our mid-year. They're pretty happy. Typically, by the end of year one, schools will have eighty percent of their high school students onboarded and active. And at the end of our first semester, we had ninety-one percent of our students are already onboarded and active in there. So that was great. Having the customized middle-through-high-school ICAPs, usually they said that's in year two or three. Our counselors actually got that finished up back in December, so that's already done, a year and a half in advance. And then we've launched our College App Manager, which usually they don't do that until spring of year two and all of that stuff. So things are going really well with School Link. I think it's going to be a great piece moving forward to help kids figure out what they're going to do once they graduate. The next part, as Mr. Heck mentioned earlier, are CCR assessments. So big piece with the assessments, our counseling staff with a specific emphasis on Ms. Rebecca Lefler, her first year. Here, she has been instrumental in aligning which assessments students take with their ICAP. So big three areas we're always talking about is college, workforce, or military. With each one of those, there's a different assessment that they might take. You know, if they're direct college bound, we're looking at the ACT or the Accuplacer. And then if they're going military, of course, the ASVAB. And then if they're going workforce, a lot of them are doing the work keys through Mr. Heck. So what Ms. Lefler and the other counselors have done, develop tracking and they're talking with those kids to make sure every single student who comes through is going to have at least one of those assessments underdeveloped by the time they graduate. Currently, they're already up to almost a hundred percent for this year's senior class. And it's been hoops and bounds just by getting it all into one spot and tracking it, which is really exciting. We also do have the ACT. Ms. Nero actually got it set up in the Career Center, March eleventh, I believe. We're offering the ACT here on campus. It's a Tuesday, it's a school day, and we're up to, I believe, last count, with seventy-two of our students are going to be taking the ACT here on campus, as opposed to having to travel to St. Jen or Patosie or down to Jackson to get that test on Saturday. So it's really, really awesome. The last piece down here is the enrichment. So one of the big things that we've been talking about as a staff for the last year or so is providing more advanced achievement opportunities for our students, pushing some of those really, those top-level kids who want to do as much as they can, learn as much as they can, providing them with an opportunity to really get out and stretch the length. So we've added additional dual-credit, dual-enrollment options this year. We're actually looking into adding AP courses for next year, and we've got a new honors program that we're still, it's early on, it's in the works, but it's going to expand options to honors courses across campus in all areas for all students. So really excited about that, too.
So if I'm a high school teacher, am I in the middle of it or are you done?
I'm good. Yeah, okay.
Gotcha. If I'm a high school teacher and you're going to communicate your plan, CSIP on CSIP, two or three measurables that you're going to come to me and expect me to see.
When you say two or three measurables that I want to see from you?
Yeah, if I'm a teacher, if I'm an English teacher, a math teacher, pick one, just pick one, tell me.
It's going to be the CFAs on those essential standards. That's going to be the main focus moving forward. The rest of this year and next year.
I already forgot what CFA was.
Common Formative Assessment. So let's say you're in, let's say you're in Algebra One. Algebra One, one of the essential standards in there is going to be able to multiply polynomials. So one of the things I'm going to want to see is every time we've assessed, hey, how are your students doing multiplying polynomials? Anybody will say, okay, I've got eighty percent were able to master it by Algebra One. The other twenty percent got it right around mid-November. Those are the things we want to be able to see, because that's an accepted, excuse me, expected standard for all of those kids to master.
Is that a unique standard? These are hostile or is that not unique?
These are all selected from Missouri Learning Standards. So they're going to take, they went through all of the Missouri Learning Standards, they're responsible for for each of these classes, and selected the essential standards out of those that are either going to, they either align directly to EOC, or the teachers have worked within their PLCs to vertically align that, hey, after Algebra One, I've got geometry, after geometry, I've got Algebra Two. What do I have to have mastered in order to be successful in those sub-sequel courses? Is that amazing?
Sounds like you're repeating standards that are already there.
But we're looking for growth. No, all of our improvement, all of the standards are there. This is about focusing on the essential standards specifically, to make sure that they're all mastered.
And these are going to be written down in your plan?
They are. Well, they will be in this plan. No, all the teachers have identified those. Core classes are all done, so our English, math, social studies, and science classes have already gone through and identified which standards they're going to highlight as their essential standards to focus on. The other courses, the non-core classes, some of them were completely done, some of them are still working on them. And then over the course of the rest of this year and then the next year, they'll be developing the CFAs to specifically identify those, make sure we're measuring, make sure we're achieving. Okay.
All right. Let's see. Where is, okay. All right. We'll just start here with the first page. We've got our building goals, which it mentions NPI, which will, that was part of the handout we had earlier, but middle schools' NPI scores in math, ELA, and science will show consistent growth. And then we have a measurable down there, which is each NPI score in math and ELA will raise ten points. So as we dive into this, I, we will take a look at our worksheet here a little bit and kind of remind ourselves, I know you guys got some training, but every now and then it's good to have a good summary or a good refresher on, I'm going to hear NPI a couple of times here, what does it mean and how does it correlate to the success of our students? So goal number one in our BCS is all about academic focus. And I am going to choose the three on the top to discuss in a little bit more detail in the upcoming slides, but I didn't want to give the impression that these are the only three items that we're doing, right? There's a lot of things that go into academic focus and academic improvement. But if I was to choose three spotlights on what's moving us, those will be the top three. We also have a building level focus, and we also have targeted interventions. So that would be the tier two and tier three that Ms. Nero had mentioned earlier. So let's take a look at the worksheet. I handed out and why the NPI score is something that we chose in order to track and make as our measurable here. So let's remind ourselves what NPI is. It's an average score that reflects how the student population performed in a specific subject group. So it's a single number indicator, and that is a number that you can compare against every other middle school in the same subject all across the state of Missouri. So it's really, if you're looking for a one-stop shop out of the middle school group, you want to look at that NPI. You want to look at that number. Okay? You'll hear it, I think, in a little bit in the elementary as well. But that NPI score, your real target is, you want to be at four hundred. Four hundred is considered proficient. Okay? So let's dig in a little bit here. On the worksheet, I provided just a couple of things that I can explain. The first one is the star. And the star, as you'll notice, is between three hundred and three eighty. That's basically your basic students, and that's where we are landing. So let's go into a little bit more detail. ELA, three seventy-eight is what the middle school brought home last year. You can see how close we are to the next level. Okay? And if we would track that with what we're hoping to do in the NPI, if we would raise ten points, you could see that we would scoot over to the yellow box column, getting the middle school three points. If you go down to math, three sixty, again, we're right there at the cusp of moving over into the next column. Science, three sixty-four, again, right there on the edge of moving into the next column for more, what we call points. Okay? The other thing that I'll point out of why NPI is so, it's the one-stop shop. If you look at the yellow box column, it's not very big. ELA is just, what is that? A nineteen points or eighteen points, almost nineteen points? So whereas our target, what you would get twelve points, they made the bullseye a little bigger, but they've taken and made the bullseye bigger on the next ring. It's smaller. So there's a thinner margin between getting all of your points in that area and getting half of your points. You can kind of see the theme that Mr. Heck brought up earlier. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense, but they are rewarding for better scores. It's easier to move over the better scores you produce. Okay? So when we look at that measurable, when we look at that one indicator, that is how each grade level is doing. That's how both, and that's how all three grade levels are doing, and that's how they're performing. They compute that into a number, they divide it by some stuff, the math gets pretty hairy. I'd have to sharpen a pencil to figure it out sometimes, but it is one number that we can look at as a one-stop shop. The numbers, the point values are assigned there at the bottom, three, six, nine, or twelve. There's no half points on these either. Okay? So you either get three, six, nine, or twelve. When we drop down to our student groups, you'll see another set of numbers. From the NPI number, they then produce another NPI number for your student groups. Your student groups are the five areas that I have listed, students with disabilities, English language learners, low income that you're pre-introduced lunch, and the two minority groups, Hispanics and African-American population. Okay? Those groups can go, you can see a lot of growth or you can see a lot of shrink all in one year, depending on how large those student groups are. Okay? If you had a higher population last year and it was based on, say, thirty students, and now this year you have a smaller subgroup, those numbers can go up and down. However, again, if you would look at those, we just missed the on-trap four-and-a-half points in two out of the three columns, three out of the two. So sometimes when you get into the numbers and you see how close you are, having a measurable consistent growth of ten points per year, if you can maintain that momentum moving forward, you start to hit into your target zone within, well, I mean, you see instant improvement, but within a few short years, you start moving on to your target where you're getting all of your points. Now, I will say, having every student proficient or averaging proficient at four hundred, you look around the state of Missouri, that is very, very difficult to do. All right? That's very difficult to do. In fact, many of our area groups struggle to put two of those in to want two four hundreds on there. You don't want two hundreds and you want four hundreds. We've been in the three hundred, high three hundreds for a number of years. Any questions on the NPI and how choosing that four I move on and talk about our three academic focus areas? Does that break down to the teacher level, what you have here? So it does. The, each student has their own score, and they get that, we send that home. They get the same number, three hundred, three sixty, four hundred, they get the same number. What the state of Missouri does is they create a formula where you can put that into and combine it with all kids, and then you get one number to signify the whole group. Okay? So the teacher would then have to, and they do, at the beginning of every year and part of our back-to-school days, they break down each of their performance and they see where their kids did well, where they did not do well. And then we could have those conversations both in DLCs and as groups. We tend to have them as sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teams, and really, the ELA team really dives in together to see what standards are missing that could have caused theirs to go well. Okay. So the three spotlights that we chose in this column, instructional focus, that tier-one instruction pops up again from Ms. Nero. Again, these aren't the only things that we're doing in tier-one instruction, but two notables, adoption of reading reconsidered and completing a math pilot. In both of those areas, very important tested areas, we've been sort of going our own way for a number of years. Elementary has gotten onboard prior with purchased materials that were aligned and that were a little bit more of a program. We're taking that as well, not only getting teachers quality materials in their hands that they can use, but also having a reliance on something that's rooted in the knowledge and, I'm trying to, I'm drawing a blank for the one. Yeah, very good. So fluency and vocabulary and having it be the same for the same conversations, where teachers aren't feeling like they have to create these wonderful materials on their own. Reading reconsidered rooted in full text, I think you guys will get an opportunity to view that as well later on. Both of those, strong vocabulary, it provides flexibility for teachers, it addresses our fluency at our level, something that we don't always get training in. And then the two math pilots, we're just looking for what is the best fit. We're on number two right now. And there is a common theme that's popping up, is our teachers are noticing that we've been working really hard, but sometimes if you're not working the right way or working in the right way, we're hearing that the students are showing just a little bit of a struggle in some of these new just a little bit of a struggle in some of these new areas. And, um, I think that's because they just, the materials that we were working with earlier just weren't up to par after a few years. And I think that that is, is showing up. So, if it feels like we're working hard and we're not seeing the results, I think it has something to do with the materials and the resources. Okay, uh, so, um, we, uh, Mr. Shaker did a great job of the essential standards, talking about identifying those, um, and, and how are we addressing those? But the third bullet point there in the middle is, is from data to, to action and execution. So a great example of that is just sliding over to number two, which is the master schedule. We've re-aligned the master schedule. For years Perry County Middle School has been, uh, we've had our conference and our planned time, uh, by grade level, where each of the grade levels could come together, uh, and, and discuss the kids, uh, not only what they were covering and strategies, but also what's, what works best for these group of kids, what's struggling over here, how are they doing, uh, in this area? How are you motivating them over here? So it was much more of a whole student approach and, and there is a lot of middle schools who continue to take that approach. With what we're seeing, um, um, in just the NPI numbers, we know that there needed to be a change. We went ahead and made the option to realign our master schedule by department. So now the entire ELA team is off during the same hour. The entire math team is off during the same hour. The science team is off during the same hour. So that slides right into our, our PLCs are now instructional focused. They can actually get into, uh, what strategies they're using, how they're using it, um, and, and move the data that they're getting to actual items and, and collegial conversations, um, whereas they couldn't do that before, but once a month during the PD days, um, and whatever they could get in on, on their own time, okay? And then also we have, um, a, a line, um, our master schedule to make use of, um, it's actually the old block schedule. When we go into our NWA testing cycles, we are aligning them just like the math test, where, uh, we have, uh, first and second hour, the students are then in first hour and they go through second hour. So we're recreating what the math schedule is gonna look like on, uh, three times a year, um, so they can get used to where they're gonna be testing, how they're gonna be testing, and what it's gonna look like, okay? And then, um, our third spotlight is our parent advisory group. We, um, this is part of our building, um, C, uh, our, our BSET plan, uh, which actually they helped us create one, um, whole, um, goal. They were instrumental in creating a lot of things that was put on there. It, it was, it's the communication goal. But we chose, uh, parents from a diverse group. We're talking through sixth grade representative, to seventh grade representative, to eighth grade, band inquire, we grab the sports parent, we grab the student, um, our parent, the student has an IEP, uh, a staff members, uh, who had a student in the building. So we got a very, uh, diverse representative group and we brought them in, um, in December and we had some open and honest conversations. We visited with them. We were, we, we covered our, where we're at achievement wise, what we're hoping to do and what we're moving towards. We got feedback from them. We chose a couple spotlights, um, um, that would address the BSET in our first one, um, and they helped us craft a plan, um, on, on moving forward. We're hoping that group, uh, can not only, uh, continue, but, uh, we're gonna be able to pass the torch year after year as our eighth graders go out, uh, what new groups are coming in. And, uh, so we're gonna meet twice a year, uh, to cover these things. Eventually that group will help us, what, what is next? What are, what are we missing and what do we need to address from the parent and from the families, uh, that we're not, uh, meeting right now? So, one of the early things that popped up was, uh, kids and social media abuse. And if anybody has an answer for that, I'll, I'll, I'll take it and I'll, I'll institute it. So if you've got any teenagers in your vicinity, it's, it's a mess when you get the middle school. Any questions?
Hi, uh, elementary. Two handouts for you, if you don't mind if I pass that over. I appreciate that. On the inside of the pamphlet, uh, you'll see it, there's the areas of focus that we're gonna focus on, uh, but I wanted to pick three specific ones that I, that I find really a focus on, part of the elementary climate and culture and, uh, academic progress. And the other sheet I gave you is, um, our, um, the NPI scores that's kind of been taken care of. This is our, this is my building's APR. And so if you look on the performance levels, you'll see English Language Arts and then you'll see two groups. You'll see all students and then a student group. And then mathematics, all students and a student group. So you can see the points that we attained on the maps, on the map that we've taken and the percentage points we've earned. You can see on there the NPI points and then, um, the designation on how we're doing. So, a- as I was studying our, our points, I was realizing that the, the concern is coming from those student groups. So, I wanted to, uh, address that with the teachers. So the inside of the pamphlet, I gave a survey and these are the things the teachers were concerned about and would like us to address. So, the first one that I'd like that we're addressing is the protected core content. And this is gonna focus on our tier one. So, our schedule will have, um, next year, a protected core content where none of the student groups are being pulled from the core curriculum. So that's ELA, math, science, social studies. There may be a few exceptions, but very unusual. I, well, I really wanted that tier one instruction. Another thing that, um, we wanna focus on is our daily, is a daily common planning for each grade level. So right now, um, our grade levels only get to meet once a week. When we have these daily common, common plans, that gives me time to give more professional development in new reading programs or math programs. It gives us time to talk together about our data and about our students and, um, it, it just allows for, it also builds the culture of the school. And then the third thing was the double dose of instruction. And so, if you would look inside the pamphlet, I'll show you kind of the differences. This is a, this was a typical third grade student that would have, um, that would be in a student group with an IEP with multiple, um, yeah, you can, sorry, thank you. This would be, that have multiple, um, services like, uh, OT or language services. So, right now, this student would look like, this will compare on the left, the general education students compared to a special group student for this year. And next year, this is a typical, uh, schedule for a third grade student. So that, that if you look at that intervention time at the bottom, that is the time that the two students will get the double dose of instruction. So they'll get all their core content, math, reading, phonics, science, and social studies in the classroom and then, uh, they'll be pulled out and the teacher will not be teaching core content during this time. So what will the teacher be doing? That's the next question. So while the students on ELL, um, uh, uh, resource, um, gifted, those kinds of groups are pulled out and taught by their teachers, the classroom teachers will be doing interventions based on student need in their classroom. So small group instruction, which is one of Patty's top ten, um, yeah, effect sizes, thank you. And so, um, everybody during that intervention time will be getting some type of small group instruction, uh, whether it's to enrich, whether it's gifted, it's, um, I- IP services. And so that, those are my three, those are my three academic focus and this is why, um, this is how we're gonna try to affect tier one instruction. So if you look back on the APR, you can see, if you want it to be four hundred or above, that's what we're shooting for. And so you can see in all student groups, there's three seventy-seven, three sixty-five, three seventy-two. It's pretty close. So we're talking, we, I believe we can move the needle by ten points on our NPI for all groups. The stretch that I really am pursuing for next year or the following year is to do twenty points in each student group. And so, and the way I can do that is having this double dosage of instruction where the T, where the students are getting the core instruction and then also remediated or enriched later, so.
I also have a handout and we'll kind of talk more about tier one instruction at my level and what it's looking like and what we're doing to improve. Waited all the way to the end. I know, right? Completely stopped. Thank you for being patient. Okay, so for my, um, just building in general, we too have been talking about tier one instruction and I'll talk a little bit more about that tiered triangle. Um, and, and when we look at data and when we look at test scores, that tier one instruction should be meeting at least eighty percent of your kids. And so if we're looking at test scores and looking at assessment and we look at the data and it's not, then we have to start with strengthening that tier one. Um, and I do believe the resources and materials and things that we have received and started using are definitely a step in that right, right direction in helping us improve our tier one instruction. So the next piece that I as building principal have just looked at is, you know, tier one instruction is what's happening in the classroom. It's not that second dose of instruction, it's not small groups necessarily, it's what's happening for everyone. And so how do we improve that? So we get the materials and resources, but we also have to work on the craft, the teaching, what's happening, um, are we effectively using time, all of those things? And so as I was reading and, and looking up at different things, I kind of read this high reliability schools and looked at different practices of how we can improve that. And I, I felt like since COVID, we really have gotten back to, these are the four walls of our classroom and not as much, um, collaboratively watching each other teach, getting that feedback as such, things like that. And so we, um, have really focused on something called instructional rounds. And the reason why we chose that was to improve our tier one instruction. And so what that looks like is we chose different pieces that we would focus on, um, during each instructional round. And so you could see we worked on pirate code, is that being implemented? You know, that's kind of our behavior, um, system that we use in the primary center, is that being implemented with fidelity with all of our kids? Then we looked at framework and framework are all the components of instruction. So are we doing our Amplify CKLA with fidelity, the way it's made to happen? All the different pieces of instruction with ELA and math. We went back and looked specifically at math fluency practices and then at UFLY, which is what we use for phonics, and then we looked at small group instruction. So just looking at teaching practice. Um, and instructional round, what it looks like is we have a group of teachers with an instructional coach. I myself as administrator are not part of the first part of the process because it's not meant to be evaluated, it's meant to look at instruction, be self-reflective, and really start looking at our practice. Because tier one is what's happening all day and so what are we doing and what can we do differently or better in our tier one instruction? And so on the handout, you can kind of see how that practice takes place. They go in, they watch instruction, they come out, um, they have a conversation and do some reflection. They talk about what did I see in here that reaffirms something I do? So what did I see in the practice that I am doing and now I know it's being done correctly and affirms that and I'm gonna continue to do that? What do I see in here that I'd like to know more about? And so the instructional coaches are there and we can say things like, you know, I noticed that this teacher uses this instructional strategy. I've never used that. How can I add that to my practice? What does that look like? Can you come in my room and show me what it looks like or help me with those resources? And then the last one is what did I see in here that I can try on my own immediately? And so just trying to improve our teaching practices that are happening day in and day out. We have teachers that work very hard. They are doing a great job, but our tier one has to be tightened up and improved if we wanna see those results. So that's kind of a big piece of what we did to improve our tier one instruction, but with that comes the assessment and the data. Oh, I'm sorry, also with the instructional rounds, then administrators go in and do walkthroughs and kind of take their own data. Because what we're seeing is, you know, when you do something as a teacher over and over, you think, yep, I do that, yep, I do that, yeah, I do that. We have to have someone coming in and giving them feedback and, and really not just self-reflection, but being able to mirror that and have that conversation about what's actually happening day in and day out. And so administrators also went in and just did walkthroughs so that we could see the reality and then match those pictures. So we do our self-reflection talk, administrators do the walkthrough and then we have a conversation about what's happening day to day in our practice and how we can improve that. The data talks are the, kind of the other side of that is looking not just at what's happening day to day, but what are the results? And so we are meeting with each individual teacher. We're laying out data of their specific students and saying, okay, what do you notice? And so the kinds of questions we might ask there are what are some trends and things that you notice in your data? Trying to help walk through those data talks with the teacher, helping them notice, you know, if there's trends of certain content that's not getting mastered. If there are specific students that aren't with the rest of the pack, what does that look like and what are we doing to intervene with that? And then just having a lot of good, honest conversation about what we can do to support them and improve their results. It's been a good conversation. We've had several just recently, you know, you have your new teachers that have, it's been very, um, I'm very impressed to work with them and their conversation and be able to look at their data and say, I see a weakness. I need help in phonemic awareness. My kids are not scoring where everybody else is. What do I need to do? What practice do I need to work on? Who can come help me? Who can show me and what does that look like? So it's been, it's been really good conversation. We have veteran teachers that have been very vulnerable and said, you know, I've always struggled with this specific content. I've gotten this professional development, I know this, but why aren't my kids' results where they need to be? And so pulling at the resources in our building and really working just to improve instruction. We as a building have had a lot of honest conversations that we're not satisfied with where we're at. And we're working very hard, but are we working in the right direction? Do we have the right resources and materials and what are we doing to improve? And so those are the two big things that we have done as a building just to improve our tier one instruction, um, and be very cognizant of that. The second slide is just our multi-tiered system of support and this is just in general, those same percentages that Jane talked about at the very beginning of the presentation. But, you know, we don't just look at academics, we're also looking at our discipline, our attendance, different pieces of data on a regular basis. People, you know, ask sometimes, would you put as a goal to improve your discipline referrals by so much? That's not necessarily what we put as a goal, but we do monitor our discipline referrals to see, do they fit in this triangle? So whenever we look at our referrals, we say, does our tier one, our climate and culture of classrooms, our discipline practices, isn't meeting the needs of eighty to ninety percent of our kids? Do we have eighty to ninety percent of kids that are not following in that discipline referral, that are not following in that area? And at this time, we do. And so we just continue to monitor that and look at our systems of support and say, is it right? Is the triangle matching? Or do we have too many kids in tier two or too many kids in tier three? Do the same thing with academics. And then right now, our eighty percent of our kids are not where they need to be. So we need to look at our triangle and that's why we're focusing on that tier one and improving that piece of instruction at this time. And so just kind of a picture that we continue to look at educator-wise constantly when we look at data, our eighty to ninety Are eighty to ninety percent of our kids' needs met with the systems that we have in place?
Question. And so I just wanna reiterate, these are our one-year goals for us. So this is not looking out five years. This is this year. And then we will reevaluate and push forward each year with a new goal. Uh we just felt like that and what we needed to do so that we keep things ever-present and in front of us. Because the work is very fresh for us. Questions?
I'll have a question on the primary. The scores will increase from one fifty-three to one sixty-three.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I'm sorry because I completely went over that. Good job, Nancy. Thank you. No, the RIT score. So we do not have MPI scores.
Right.
Because we don't have the math test. But we do have currently NWEA. And so in NWEA, they give a RIT score, which is something similar. However, they are saying we're shooting for four hundred, shooting for four hundred. That's not the same. So a RIT score is kind of that that score that every individual kid gets. We also get an average per grade level, per content, and then we also get it per building, per content. Uh with NWEA, a the higher the RIT score, the higher their level of understanding. So you can have a kindergartner with a RIT score of a hundred and fifty. You can have a first grader with a hundred and fifty and a second grader with a hundred and fifty. What that means is that hundred and fifty is how deep their level of understanding is within their grade level of content, if that makes sense. So it's not the higher the score, the more they um the higher their grade level or the more they know. It's the higher level of understanding. So I kind of look at it as if I'm a, and I'm making up these numbers, but if I'm a one hundred, I understand information at a DOK one or a DOK two. So I can recall it, I can spit it back out. But if I'm a two hundred or a three hundred, I have a higher level of understanding so I can use that information and apply it to something else. Or I can compare and contrast it, or I can do higher level skills within that standard. And so it's not a, and we have a hard time parent-wise too, of just because they're used to, well, what grade level is that or what? And it's not. It's just a, the higher the RIT score, their higher level of understanding of grade level material. And so the test is um adaptable, just like the math test. So the more questions they get right, the harder the test question will be. And if they get it wrong, it'll kind of adapt it a little bit lower. And so it kind of gets to this honey spot of this is where they're performing and then you get a RIT score. But it's not necessarily a grade level or knowing more than one kiddo. It's just the level of understanding. And so we're gonna take that average and we were trying to do something comparable that would make sense for us. We also are looking at, you know, we may not be doing NWEA necessarily next year. We're looking at the iReady. Um at the primary level, we have been using iReady just for math. Um kind of as a supplement and it gives some online personalized instruction and things like that. And within that, then we have already found some really wonderful reports that are similar to what Mr. Schaefer has, but at our level to where it says every standard in math and here's each kid that has mastered that standard and kids that have not. And so we already are finding some really good reports to drive instruction, close gaps, things like that. And then it gives you an overall score, but it wouldn't be necessarily a RIT score. So each tool gives a little bit of a different score.
With the RIT score, is there a maximum? Like is two hundred as high as it can go?
No, there's not really a max. It's very odd. So whenever I, as soon as she said four hundred, I went back because I thought, hmm, I know our RIT scores have been close to four hundred. So I wanna go back and look at that. And I picked what I would consider a high kid, um high achieving student, and it was like two-ten. And then I picked a student that I thought was lower achieving. It was like one fifty. So it's, I don't see three hundreds and four hundreds per se.
Sure.
But it it could be two, you know, our K and one, there's a lot of recall information. The OK levels look different. When I say the OK, I'm sorry, I mean depth of knowledge. And so as we do that, of course, the older they get, the more they're seeing those types of questions. So I don't know. I would be interested to see their report at their range of RIT scores.
It's chopping. I I think it goes into the three, four hundreds.
Yeah.
Range.
Once they get in there. So. Thank you. I don't know why I skipped that. I I waited so long to talk.
Question, guys. Um are you guys can each take it? Um this one always, I probably, you've probably heard me bring it up before, so. Maybe once again. Um when I think of my student and my involvement in challenging him to or her to do better, I look at that semester score, that uh score we get all the time, grade point average. And what I didn't hear in any plan was how that grade point average that we're giving, we're telling parents and we're telling students, how that is matching up with how we're achieving at the end of the year. Meaning that, what does it look like? Are we giving honest feedback to the parents when they get that GP GPA? Are they matching up at the end of the year? Anybody can take it or everybody can?
I can go ahead and talk first. We kind of revamped our report card this year uh for that exact reason. Um we felt like um standard space grading is is working for us and it's great feedback for students and parents. But in standard space grading, you want to give children an opportunity to continue to be re-taught and then master. And so when I showed previously maybe a three on a rich core card that shows level of proficiency, which is three is where you want them. Uh they may have been re-taught and exposed to that content multiple times and tried multiple times before receiving that. And so a three for a kiddo that it took three, four, five times to master that content versus a three that it's the first time, that's different, but it was given the same grade, grade. Now we have taken a lot of time to relook at that to make sure that that three or two or four is a true of questions of what they can do independently on that. And so we've been looking at reading comprehension, giving them still a one, two, three or four, but it's based on more assessment data and what they can do independently the first time. And then they still have that second semester to improve that score, but I feel like it is a truer picture
So when you said you revamped.
Of where they're going.
Did you notice we were on the higher side or?
I I felt like at my, and I'll just speak to my level, that I don't know that parents always had a really good understanding of what it took to get there. And I think it's important that we as teachers are getting kids to master content because they have to go on to the next grade level and they have to have the the precursor to that and be good at it. But I think a child that had to have multiple exposures, multiple reteachings, maybe some small groups, some tier two, some tier three to achieve that would look different than a child that mastered it the first time. And the way you were recording it looked the same. And so that was something just self-reflection. We wanted that to be a better picture and a truer picture of where they were going. And I feel like now it matches more of our assessment data. And we've been able to have good conversations with parents because of that.
I can go. Um I it's a, so I, the answer is, there's a lot that goes into it. Like there's, there's a lot. And 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 what I mean by that is um ultimately, at the end of the year, the math test is a comprehensive and also performance and also mixing with a one-two. Whereas many of your grades, um and we are the first building who does, who gets back to the uh A, B, C's and D's, you know, how how you're performing on a hundred-point test. You get to prepare for that test. You get a a take-home uh unit review and you get to study. And you your your folks get an email, hey, you got a test tomorrow. Um or or or, you know, you get the study guide, you get to perform. Um but very similar to everyone here took the driving test. If we were to take you back to the DMV and say, hey, let's go ahead and retake this test, you might not do as well a number of years down, you know? So so that math test, that that by the way, doesn't give them a grade right there. It's not really that greatable. So you're trying to motivate, uh sometimes eighth graders are typical to motivate in May. Um so so you you you're trying to get that motivation, that want-to, and at the same time have taught them all of the essential standards that they need and also then be able to use that. Maybe they haven't seen that information even though you prepped, okay? Uh but when you take that unit test, uh the folks know it's coming, you report that grade in the grade book. They're not doing well. They see that. So our society does have, we're A and B driven in the moment. Uh when we get to April and May, with a test that doesn't necessarily give you an A and B, um that 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 is also a component of it. And so that's why I say it's it's kind of multi, you know, it's there's a lot of layers there. Um I refer to and I and I talk a lot about, well, we've gotta find a way. There's no other excuses. We've we've gotta find a way to have those things matched together. And and that's why, you know, a lot of things are on the table, who they take the test for, the where they have, where they take the test, what order they take the test, all of those things, um we we have all we've done in the last three years. Um but if if other districts can figure it out, we're gonna figure it out. Um but how the points and how my As and Bs line up versus the performance on the math, um it so it's if it's kind of, there's different levels in there. Some of that makes sense.
Well, one of one of the other things, um and this is, it's funny that you bring it up because we've been talking about it a lot lately and that's um the idea of traditional grade books and and what we call point acquisition, right? You you've got a grade over the course of an entire semester that includes uh the test scores, uh and projects they might have done, um homework assignments, completion assignments, all that kind of thing. Um and then there's also, you know, standards and competency base. Like uh so for instance, with Dr. Bill and and Hispanics, they're they're a standards-based, which is a similar competency base where, hey, you pass or you won when you should have mastered all of these things. But in the middle school and high school, you pass as long as your percentage is above sixty percent. There's a lot of ways to standardize. So one of the things that we've been talking about in high school for a couple of years is reducing fluff in the grade book. So the grade book is a true reflection of mastery of objectives and standards and not necessarily of compliance. Not that, I mean, are you getting an A in this class because you show up every day, you do your work and you turn it in on time? Are you getting A in this class because you've shown that you've mastered all of these standards that English two requires? Does that make sense?
So mastery is more aligned with the test, if if the want-to is there.
Uh yes. So one of the big things that were that I kind of talked about earlier is reducing the number of those those assessments that we're doing. So we're only focusing on those essential standards and we're increasing the rigor, right? It's not a multiple choice, pick the right answer here, but it's a true test of have they mastered the standard, yes or no. If they haven't, we're going back, we're re-teaching, we're coming at it from a different angle to make sure we're there. So that our our high achieving, you know, we we've got kids, we had more kids with a four-oh this past fall semester in high school than we've had since I've been there. That's awesome. I wanna make sure that translates to true mastery where now they can perform on, I mean, EOCs are important for state, but I'm looking at ACT, the Acne Place, or has that in the work fees? That's actually gonna affect them once they leave Perryville High School. And so it's it's about figuring out, okay, are we are we doing grades or we focused on mastery? And that's that's the big shift that we're gonna be working towards in the next four or five years is how do we make it more about mastery and less about point acquisition?
Because I was gonna add to that. So I've been administrator sixteen years and I haven't had a traditional grade card in thirteen. And so um the way, and I don't have the background in the district to know as far as what it looks like compared to last year's scores. But what I do know is that the teachers and I sat down per grade level and we looked at our math results and we looked at our grade cards and we said, is it the same rigor? Are we assessing at the rigor that the, at the grade card and at the state assessment? And so we made some adjustments at the very beginning of the year because is, and we have an amazing curriculum. It's amazing. But no curriculum, unless you have a state curriculum, is going to have everything in it. So we went through our essential standards, we went through our um our state test standards and saw how we did on each standard. And then we looked at our curriculum and said, we're missing, it's got a gap of this in it. Um instant, for for example, third grade was author's purpose. It Amplify didn't have a great uh series on author's purpose. So we just implemented some extra materials for that. So um even though we don't give traditional grades, we are able to address standards at at uh at the state level compared to our report cards.
Mr. Powell, you mentioned um you know, there are other schools that are doing better and we can do better as well. I agree. Has there been any consultation with any of these other schools that are performing better than us to find out what they're doing? Certainly we can try those those things as well.
Yeah, um it just an example, we um um Dr. Burstman and um Counselor Fellerman uh just just went up to check out and visited uh with another one of our conferences this week. Uh our just, it was the last week, I think, or this week. Um they were together. Yeah, uh and and for that exact uh reason. Um and a lot of times you don't find a magic, you know, there's, I try to look for magic dust sometimes, but it really, it doesn't, it sometimes it just comes out that we we just gotta be able to to focus on, um are we teaching? Uh and are we having our students learn at the level they're expected to perform? And and I think that that uh is is the bottom line. We just, we uh but yeah, we we have conference meetings. I, you know, under principal, we always have a topic with the session uh when we have those. So a lot of good ideas come from that. Um I try not to turn it into the obstacle game, which is, man, well, we we can't do that because I try not to do that. I try to take away one or two things. Because someone's always gonna have maybe another staff member. Somebody's always gonna have one more whole department thing or or maybe um this or that. But we also have a lot of things that they don't have.
Our dual credit, how, I mean, how many kids are enrolled in our dual credit?
Total number?
Yeah.
I I can tell you, we currently offer fifty-six dual credit dual enrollment credit hours. I couldn't tell you the total number of students, but it's a lot.
I almost feel like.
Oh, we just added them to this year. We now offer dual credit dual enrollment.
I just don't hear that much about it as we as we have in years past. So, I mean, I think that's a wonderful advantage for our high school kids um to walk out of here with ten, twelve. I mean, there's even possibility of twenty credits. Um so I don't know. I was just kind of wondering if we were.
I could give the total number for you if you mind. It's it's a lot. They they're making very, very popular.
Good.
And next year, um one of the really popular ones is uh uh our speech class with Mr. Hendrix. He's he's been, he's open to draw all kinds of hoops with CMO to get uh certified to do his dual enrollment, not get very, I'm sorry, dual at dual enrollment, not just dual credit. Uh at the, in May, he'll have finished that up. So we'll be able to offer that where he's not just proctoring on behalf of CMO, but he'll actually be the teacher of record, the teacher for that too. So we're constantly expanding those. Um Ms. uh Ms. Liam Field is offering another one next year and then oh my goodness, oh, Ms. Littleton, Ms. Stacy Littleton is adding uh another one uh next year through Uncle as well. So kind of keep expanding. The next one that we're we're dipping our toes into is AP courses. So those advanced placement courses is a different animal. It's not something that that we've offered since I've been here. Um and trying to learn more about that, see who would be interested in going through to get that accreditation for them and see how that's gonna benefit more of the students too.
I heard that we're on, in the
Um, I heard that we're on, in the middle school, we're on math pilot number two. Um, what happened to math pilot number one, did we just not, it wasn't working for us or?
No, I think that's, that's a good reason to pilot. I look at math being, um, um, math is in a unique spot because they can take on a unit and they can do it in that pilot. Where it's kind of difficult than a lot of other items to go, wait a minute, kids, we're gonna try this pilot, it's kind of tough. But, uh, math is in a unique spot where they can pick up with a unit, uh, in different, uh, series. Um, the, and I think that's why it's a good two pilot now, because that first one, it just, there was a lot of friction. It just didn't, um, um, for a number of reasons. Uh, but, but I think it was a overwhelming, you know, that's probably not gonna work for us in our community. So let's go on number two, uh, and, and we had already lined up number two as well. So now it's to the point where, you know, you can't just keep piloting, obviously. So, uh, very, very different than it was maybe twenty years ago when you see the instructional materials and the guys show up and try to sell you. Uh, not like that anymore, all of them come with an online component, all of them come with parent training videos and a whole parent series. There's at-home teaching, so, um, the more you kind of dabble, sometimes, um, you just gotta figure out what you need. And then, you know, uh, wh- what you need most and then which one, uh, really does that, uh, the best, so.
So when we pilot those programs, do we pick out certain kids that are our pilot kids for that program? Or do we, or a whole entire class or a grade level?
So, so with this year, uh, we, um, so with this year, we, uh, plan in conference, uh, by department now. So our apartment, our department, um, attempted to go into it, we're all gonna do this together, this, a unit in each. So even if you're not exactly teaching the same unit, you're, uh, asking the same questions, you were in, uh, experiencing the same issues. A lot of times, uh, with the pilots, you get a pilot, uh, facilitator who we can meet with, we can share questions. We can take one of those PLCs I mentioned earlier, they can zoom in, how's it going, where's the questions happening? Uh, and then you also have a salesperson that goes with that. So they partner together to make sure your experience is good, uh, or you're getting what you need out of the program. Um, every now and then it won't match up, I can think of just this last one, the algebra, uh, portion of our, of our current pilot. It, it, it wasn't quite matching up, so the other sixth, seventh and eighth grade opted to pilot at the same time. Eighth was a little behind, but they were still able to get in, um, just about a week later, so.
Thank you.
With budget coming up, it's gonna be, uh, uh, crunch time on something, so can't keep piloting.
Um, I heard about a lot tonight about realigning our classroom instruction. Um, I'm really kind of excited about that, I think that will, um, help tremendously. Um, and it's kind of amazing, amazing to me to know that I mean, you're pulling your kid out five point five hours, I mean, that, that just blows my mind. We can get that down to thirty minutes, so I, I, I'm really anxious to see how that is gonna pay off because I think we truly will see some benefits from that, so thank you all for giving that, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we, we, we can all research into with our student groups, how many, uh, kids are receiving services and extra help. You know, we're trying to flip that triangle so that that tier one is hitting the majority of our kids and meeting their needs. So we're not trying to intervene our way to success. Some kids have to have it.
Right.
We know that, but, um, so that we don't have so many that are needing those supports.
I'm sorry, Keith, that feels like belaboring this, but this is very important stuff. Um, and one important thing that Dr. Jones said was that our, our C SIP is definitely not gonna be something that sits on a, a shelf somewhere. And so I thought, uh, Mr. Shadrick, of a different way to ask my question, you know, give everybody a shot. Um, you guys ever heard what an elevator speech is? In an elevator, you introduce yourself. So for this, let's pretend like, um, someone's in an elevator with one of your teachers and they're in with someone important. Mr. Hayden's very important, so if you're in that elevator with them, they got twenty seconds or so. And Mr. Hayden says, hey, I heard, um, your building principal put together a great plan. And Mr. Hayden knows this, a, a good plan is a smart plan, it's specific and measurable and it's attainable. It's very relevant and it's time bound. And he says to your teacher, just think of one of your teachers. Tell me about, um, in the next twenty seconds, thirty seconds, about your, uh, your, your new building C SIP plan goals. Uh, give me an example of what you, what you expect your teacher to say.
Okay, so, I expect my teacher to say, so this year we focus on just essential standards that are most important for every kid to master in every class. And then we are assessing and measuring and adjusting our instruction to make sure they master every single one of those before they move on.
I think I got under twenty seconds there.
My teachers would just talk a lot about tier one instruction and what we're doing to improve tier one instruction. That's what our focus has been.
A big shout out and goal to Mr. Hayden.
They would talk about how we've been doing one-to-one data teacher meetings and their own personal goals for their classroom and what they want to do to. Um, we talk as a lead team regularly about our building C SIP and we talk about where we're at. So I might bring data and say, okay, this is what we said we were gonna do, this is where we're at. This is what we said we were gonna do, this is where we're at. So we're revisiting that. But I think as a whole, my staff would say tier one instruction, because that is what we have talked a lot about. That we have to get that to fit in the triangle.
Would they know these are measurable?
We've talked about them, could they be able to say, our, we're gonna improve our RIT score by, I don't know. But yes, we've talked about them a lot.
I would, I would say that my teachers would say a protective core content so that protect the kids are pulled out during math and research days and stuff. I would say that they would say they wanted to give them a chance where they can get, uh, enrichment data to use Russian. And then I would say that, um, more, um, collaboration time so they can do more planning, more data. We've been also meeting like the primary center with teachers, the coaches and I, and the, and walking teachers through the data and what the data means and how to move the numbers. And so I, I think they would increase the tier one status.
I would hope they would say, eight, eighty percent of the math test is based on essential primary standards. And we've got to address those with quality materials. And we have to find a way to motivate them to come test it as well. Um, that's harder than.
If I'm my teacher and I've got twenty seconds, I'm not gonna talk about numbers, I'm gonna say, I love my kids and my job is to help them in any way, shape, or possible, to either prepare for college or prepare for a job. And most importantly, I want to have a good relationship with my kids, so they don't want to let me down. And that's the math.
Mr. Schaefer, are there any other schools that have tried breaking up the testing like you're going to?
I have a feeling there's one to this year.
You, you're not aware of any that have tried it yet?
I, I believe schools have been doing that for a time now, since we've been allowed to do it certainly years ago. Um, I couldn't tell you specifics, but I know that there are folks that I talk with that are doing it.
I have to believe that'll help, at least to some extent.
I just want to thank everybody, um, from the board. I know this is a process, I know it's, I know it's hard work, I know it's time consuming, I know it's looking at a lot of data and trying to figure out how we solve this puzzle. Um, and I really just appreciate everybody's hard work in this, we're all in it together. We're all focused on our academics and that's what we need to be focused on for our kids. And I just want to thank you all, everybody in the district, I mean, it takes everybody, it takes the janitors, it takes everybody to get to focus on those kids and give them the best education that they can get while they're here. So thank you for that, please share that with the rest of the staff. Um, I, I think with what we've heard tonight, I mean, I do think we're gonna start turning things, but that's not gonna happen overnight. It's, it's gonna be a couple of years, at least that's what I feel, to be able to get turned and lined out the way we want, but I appreciate everybody's willingness to look at new things and to, to do things differently because we can't keep doing the things that we're doing the same way and get the same results. We've got to, we gotta look at things differently, so I appreciate, um, all the work that everybody's gonna be. We need, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve building C SIP plans as presented.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passed. Our, move on to our discussion items. Um, that MSBA policy updates, I don't, I've looked at it, I think a couple of people have, it's a very long, um, forty-three pages, I believe. Um, I'd like to maybe just put that as a discussion item on for next month. Some of our administrators have not gotten to look at that and I think there's some things in there that they really need to take a look at before we, uh, do anything else with that, so we're just gonna, uh, table that one. Put it on for a discussion item next month as well. Um, number two, update our policies, those we will, does anybody have any questions on those? Um, it looks pretty straightforward.
So, uh, we are asking just to add that, um, the ability for the staff to utilize also their sick leave, that's that sick leave portion of their P T O when school is canceled because of weather or some other reason. Twelve-month staff is expected to still come in. But if they, um, are, live in an area or they have a reason that they don't feel it's safe to come in, like there's a lot of snow, um, they are allowed to use their vacation or their personal days. But we have a lot of new staff, it takes some time to build up those vacation days, it takes a couple of years to get those. And so I would love to be able to allow them to also use sick leave and leave that choice up to them. And I need that to say that in the policy, the policies for the personal and the vacation say that and the sick does not. So we would like to give that to, to the next option.
Is that only when the, if the campus is still open? If the campus is closed, I don't need to use it to do anything.
Our areas, um, sometimes there's one portion of the county that's pretty good and there's some that are not good at all. And we want to allow them to make the decision on what they think is their own safety. And if they have the days, I want them to be able to use them and they get more sick days upfront.
We're gonna say weather day, it sounds.
If there's no more discussion, then next month that'll move up until the consent agenda items. Okay, informational items are financial report.
So for the financial report this month, we used, utilized the dashboard again. On this first tab is all funds revenue, so we have a separate report just for revenue and then the next one would be just for expenditure, so this is year to date. So at the close of the book of January reporting, the local revenue, state revenue and federal, so this allows us to not, so allows us to see a real breakdown of the different types of revenues that are coming in. I like that we see the, the breakdown and the portion of it received, the percent received of the total budget. And then still, it's always very important for me, for us to look at a three-year comparison. And these visuals offer that for you. So the local eleven, revenue received in the same month, the same time period through, up to three years down there. And then the state revenue and then the federal revenue. And you may say, oh, why is, why is, why is there such a drop in federal revenue? Well, just, um, a couple, a few years ago, we received a lot of COVID grant money and that was federal money, money coming in as a revenue source and we're no longer receiving that. So, um, after that twenty twenty-three drops off, you should see, um, that level out a little bit. And then we also always want to present it to you in the numbers, the numbers are important to look at, visuals are important, but numbers help you really dive down deep. So you can see, um, where the prior year, previous year to date, what we had received in revenues. Our current year to date, what we received in revenues, what we budget, what we estimate we're gonna do on revenues. And then the percent that we've received so far. And I've always, um, will continue to reiterate that we're very conservative in our revenues at the beginning of the budget year. Last year, we, we were very conservative on those, um, and then came back and made amendments. As monies came in, um, things looked a little better and so we would make those amendments. So we're getting to the point where we can start making those suggestions. Our next tab are the expenses all broken out. So we have, um, those year-to-date fund expenses for salaries and benefits, purchase services and supplies and materials. So that's what we've spent so far and the percent of the total budget. And then the three-year comparison of those. And then the actual breakdown. And in this breakdown, uh, one of these line items, I've been asking a couple of questions about. We're diving in a little deep, you can see, for example, under benefits, all other benefits. You can see that we are higher than what we have been the prior year. We've already exceeded what we had budgeted. And so what all, what all falls into that category? And so there'll be a lot of line item codes that fall under that, one's, one particular that's not one you can always budget for, Workman's Comp is in there. So we, we make those estimates based on what we did in the past. And there's some other things there, so I'm, I'm really wanting to dive into that more deeply. This report allows me to look at those, those pieces and just keep going further and further down into a granular level to, to see where we are and what we've budgeted. So I really like the dashboard. Um, I think it's beneficial to look at it throughout the month, not just one time a month. Um, starting to learn more about it and hopefully we'll continue to add to the dashboard. I really like how we can break it all out instead of just looking at big chunks. Because we don't always understand really all the little small pieces and parts that are in it.
And Raven James update?
So, um, immediately, two days after, um, the board decided to go with Raven James. Uh, Mr. Mike Reich reached out to me, um, came in and sat down in the office, he was here for three hours. Uh, we talked a lot and we went through a lot of, um, data that he had already accessed that was public. Data from our budget stuff, and so, um, just kind of big picture talking, um. And then he went back and got to work and he's been calling me about every other day on the phone. We talked today and he says, uh, he's gonna have some stuff for me to take a look at, hopefully by Friday. And so it's just, um, questions about. And so, it's just questions about long-range plans, things that, that he's finding in our data and we're explaining. He, he's, his question was, he saw in our ASBR that we had a sudden, sudden expenditure, a big two-million-dollar expenditure in capital. And he was like, what, why, why did you have that? You didn't have that prior years. Well, that's what it took for us to finish the middle school building. And it was real quick to explain that to him. And he goes, oh, that makes perfect sense because we didn't have that before. And you don't have that built into the budget this year. So, he's just kind of really trying to get a good feel for where we currently are. What I've asked her to do is really study that capital projects fund, but also consider the amount of transfers that have gone over there historically and if some of those transfers could stay over in the general funds. Those transfers could stay in those funds where we pay for materials and supplies and staff and salaries. So, we have a plan for that also, long-range. Not just the big purchases and the renovations and, and the upkeep of things. But also the stuff like the curriculum pieces and the teacher resources and salaries. Really pleased so far, impressed so far. And he's been really good to connect often. Hey, Mr. Hayden is gonna give us the attendance report. I have to go just a second. I mean, it's on a different page.
So, Mrs. Belker alluded to a while ago. I'd like to start out by once again thanking all the members here in the audience this evening here, part of our administrative team. Attendance has been a big push since last year. I think they get tired of me saying I missed class time, I missed instructional time. But we started something new. We're gonna start out before I give you numbers here. If you have a student in the district last Friday, I've started something brand new and that is sending out an attendance letter, letting you know your child and what their attendance is. Also, they're receiving a text message and an email. If the student is gone and we're thanking them if they did call in, to let them know. We're very appreciative of that, but we're trying to reach those that are not calling in or notifying us what's going on. So, I like to thank them for their hard work and what they're doing. Did some reports here and went from first semester and be honest with second semester, it's been tough. Between flu, weather, things along that line. But wanted to give you an overall average daily attendance. Was still trying to figure out, maybe I'm bringing up ninety of ninety because we can't quite figure out where the system and how it's working or how it's, so doing that or figuring that. But first semester, primary center and Wyatt throws kindergarten down to the bottom, I have no idea. But overall percentage for the primary center was ninety-four-point-four-seven. Down to elementary, ninety-four-point-seven-two-five. Middle school was ninety-five-point-oh-four. And I hear Mr. Cow back there, but I believe, let's see, here's high school, ninety-two-point-one-three. I believe if we scroll back up, let's hear it for second grade has the highest or at least first semester had the highest attendance for first semester. And Mr. Hecht, I apologize, but I did this report and I said, there's no way this is right because that's the case, we're gonna be bringing a lot of tuition for the district. Five-hundred-and-sixty-nine students attending the district, but that includes our business classes such as intro computers, personal finance. So, we're trying to figure out how to pull groups and our kids and give an accurate report there. So, that was ninety-three-point-one. So, second semester, as I mentioned, kind of fallen off a little bit there, obviously, between flu, weather, ninety-two-point-one-seven, ninety-two-point-two-six. Ninety-point-seven-eight for middle school.
I can't see.
And then high school, we had eighty-eight-point-five. So, it's been, it pretty hard by the flu and different things there, but that's just a monthly report I'm gonna be sharing with you on attendance. And once again, like these guys and gals between phone calls and visits and also our SROs going out and trying to visit and make contact. And Mr. Hecht made a very important point a while ago. Is it's very, very important that we connect with our kids and their parents to let them know that we care about them. We're truly wondering what's going on, if they, something's maybe happened to them. So, it's very, very important to make that connection. So, that is the report for this month.
I have a question. When I look through these numbers, the, the student count, we went, and you look at first semester and then second semester, we went down kids in every grade level. Is, is, is that possible?
A lot of times we have students that either may transfer. Some students, I'll use the high school, for example, they graduated. So, our numbers may be down, so does high school others.
Just asking.
You're receiving, seeing it even in elementary or primary, for sixteen labs.
Every, every thirty-two, every grade there down again, from one to the other, so.
Well, we had previously talked about, and I don't mean to speak out of term, but we were questioning whether when a student is enrolled and they're attending, if that adds to your count for that semester. So, you know, when you start at the beginning of the semester, you're just having that small group. Nobody's came and nobody's transferred in. So, maybe those unique students total that we had. So, I can see that one number, we had never had one, nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine students in each grade in one class.
Thank you. Okay, our survey results.
Climate and culture. At your places, I provided you with an update and copy of the current survey results as well as just to make it easier for you so you don't have to go to the website, flip back and forth if you wanted to compare this year's results with last year's. So, you have both of those at your place setting. We did several things different with our climate and culture report this year, or, or with our survey than we had in the past. So, I want to say that this survey cannot be compared directly to last year's survey. We had a committee of board members, staff and parents who reviewed the twenty-twenty-three survey questions to better align them with our CSET. With the hope that the data collected with the survey that we administered in October will inform our teams as we continue to work toward our identified goals. This year, another difference that you'll note is that instead of issuing one survey where the first question was for the people to self-identify what group they belong to, we, I separated it into six different surveys and we sent that survey directly to the appropriate group. And then with the community member group, we had to republizize that through our social media, our local media and other tools that we change and use. Students were administered the survey this year, given time in their homeroom or advisory class to take the survey and students in grades three to twelve took the survey. And as you can see on the first page, the comparison of the participation rates over the last three surveys, October seems to be our sweet spot with responses. Teachers were able to work that into their schedules to accommodate all students and give them the classroom time to take the survey. You see, we have nine-hundred-and-eight students were able to take the survey. October seemed to work for us. And we timed that at, and I can't remember, it was somebody in our committee suggested that we timed the survey with parent-teacher conferences so that parents could be reminded by the teachers to take the survey. And every teacher had a QR code posted in their classroom so that parents could easily access that survey this year. We've all had the opportunity to review this data in, in your packet. We were supposed to present in January, it's been, uh, it's been until now. So, this update has the updates. And there was also just a couple of typos in there that I was able to correct as well. I just wanna point out that the questions are similar to the last year's survey. So, you can analyze some of that data and notice trends, even if the questions aren't exactly the same. And we did add some questions that you're not gonna be able to compare directly. One of the questions on both surveys is whether respondents believe students are safe on campus, on our campus, for instance. So, you'll be able to look at last year, the student rating was three-point-BA on the Likert scale. And this year it increased slightly to three-point-seven-four. And likewise, the parent rating increased slightly on that from three-point-seven-two to three-point-seven-nine. So, as you compare your data, as you're looking through, as you analyze these results, you will have some comparison points there that you can note. And our admin team and our CSET committees will be able to use this information as well to direct revisions and goal-setting in the CSET. As another reminder, this climate and culture survey is required annually by DESI. And we also share this information with all of the stakeholder groups, all of our participant groups. It is already live on our website. On the very last page, you have a copy of the news release about the survey. It has a QR code. It's live on our website and in the morning it will be emailed to all of our staff, parents. We'll have access to that and it will be distributed through our local media and social media. Does anybody have any questions about the survey and how we'll be able to use that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to our spotlight.
So, I came in a little over a year ago, we've been in the media vibration. We need support at the Career Center, they believe in what we do and have done a great job for so many years. And next year is gonna be our fiftieth anniversary. But I've talked into a lot of the teachers, they felt like some of our kids who are getting ready to take that next step, be in a four-year university, a technical school or even straight to the workforce, that there was a little bit of a void in scholarship opportunities. So often we think of scholarship opportunity as only those kids who are going to a four-year university like Southeast or Mizzou or a similar institution. And we've got so many kids who we feel we are preparing directly for a workforce that even immediately upon graduation, they're entering and contributing straight to our community. So, when it comes to the scholarships, really the thinking from my perspective is, I, I used to be a high school principal. The spring semester of a student's senior year is so hectic. It's hectic for schools, it's hectic for people behind the scenes. And even those people in our community who are generous and willing to give, sometimes it's a really difficult thing to review a bunch of scholarship applications, get the money sent, select, award and those things. So, when we decided, one, we wanted to set up a scholarship program at the Career Center. We wanted to make it simple and easy for people to give. If they wanna jump through the hoops and review every application, by all means, come in and meet with us. But the way we've got it set up, if somebody's generous enough and willing to give, they send their donation that way. We have the students that are on an application here and then the staff at the Career Center will review each application and then make, and make the selection. So, our donors, we've set it up kind of in a, I think, is a pretty neat way. They can split their donation into two. We like to go in increments of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, they can say, give five-hundred dollars, might go to one student. Or they could say, make it multiple and give the two. Instead of their money, they have the discretion if they want it directed to a student from a particular school, they can do so. We have students that come from the sixth area, sending schools and they have that prerogative. And if they like, they can even direct their scholarship donation to go to a graduate of a specific program, whether it be agriculture, auto collision, auto service, construction, you name it. And then finally, I'd like to add one thing that I think makes the program unique is because yes, the donation may support a kid going to Rankin, Mineral Area, State Tech or, or somewhere else. But we believe that a lot of our kids who are trained here and are entering straight into the workforce, they're also generating a lot of expenses. So, I think it's a pretty cool aspect of this program that allows a donor to, to give to a student who is going straight into the workforce that might have some expenses. So, a student can fill out an application and say, for example, I've been hired by a local construction company. They want me to have X amount of tools. They would like me to join a union and I don't know if I can afford that stuff. And, and this would be just a way to give them a helping hand and start. And bottom line, we wanted to say in our community too, and contribute here.
Okay, thank you. Everyone can look at the board newsletter. Anybody have any questions about that? And I guess we're up to the MSBA video.
As I'm in the midst of applying for residency right now, which we luck, Grammarly has again been a lifesaver with my application in helping me write my personal statement and CV. Grammarly is your digital writing assistant.
Welcome to the February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report. We begin with a look at the governor's State of the State address last month. On January twenty-eighth, Governor Kehoe delivered his first State of the State address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Securing Missouri's future was the theme of Governor Kehoe's address. Governor Kehoe's budget recommends a two-hundred-million-dollar increase for the foundation formula and over three-hundred-and-seventy million dollars to fully fund the state's commitment to school transportation needs. For teachers, the budget includes thirty-three million dollars to fund teacher salaries. While the governor does recommend a two-hundred-million-dollar increase to the foundation formula, that still leaves it underfunded by three-hundred million dollars.
You're going to hear it in the media, so you might as well hear it from me first. While it's clear our support for K-through-12 education is a record investment in the largest we've ever seen, we are not fully funding the farming. And while we are committed to making good on the funding commitments passed by the legislature last year, this budget does not include an additional three-hundred-million-dollar liability that was imposed on us by an administrative body.
The governor is also asking for fifty million dollars in state general revenue for school vouchers and seven million dollars for capital improvements at charter schools. The combination of an underfunded foundation formula coupled with a diversion of funds to charter schools and unaccountable voucher programs is concerning. MSBA's chief advocacy officer, Brian Shields, says that with so much talk around ed reform, MSBA will be spending a great deal of time focusing on education funding and accountability.
Coming out of seven-twenty-seven, priority number one has to be education funding. You know, one of the promises that was made is they were expanding school choice last year prioritization. And their selling point to many members who are kind of uneasy about voting for seven-twenty-seven is, but don't worry, public education is going to get so much more money out of this. So, I mean, we are here to say, we are here to make sure that education is fully funded. We believe that the best accountability for schools happens at that local level. And we get very concerned when hard-earned tax dollars are coming from our citizens they go to places that are not held that same level of accountability. And we wanna make sure that if, if a dollar is going out from the state, whether it goes to a public school or a primary school through the NSA or a charter school, that they are held to a high, high standard.
The governor's executive budget recommendations are the starting point for the legislative appropriation process. MSBA is now working with legislators to support MSBA's priorities as they involve funding beyond the governor's recommendations for public education. As the appropriation process now begins, your advocacy efforts will be essential to protect funding from Missouri's public school students.
You know your district best. You know, um, how policy is going to impact you at a local level. And making those personal connections for legislators is really the opportunity to impact. Cause when Brandt goes and has conversations with them, he's offering a statewide perspective, which is important. But most often, those emotional, personal conversations about your local communities is what's going to sway the mindset of a legislator.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletters and to members via email each Friday during the session through critical issue alerts and MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The Spring Advocacy Series helps you connect the classroom to the Capitol and make an impact in shaping education policy. The large class of freshman legislators in the Missouri House and Senate means your insights as a local school leader will be critical and your connections can make the difference. Log on to Advocacy Lunch and Lunch for the latest updates in the legislative session and plan to attend MSBA's Advocacy Day and Student Showcase with your school board to meet your legislators at the Capitol on March 11th. For more information about all of these events, visit the MSBA website. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders on public schools. Visit the MSBA website for ideas to celebrate and materials created to help recognize the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and we'll see you in March for the next MSBA Board Report.
I have one question.
Yes.
About discussion items. These MSBA policy updates, do they come in batches? Like, I see it says 2024D. If we see one come down, could we send it out ahead of time? It just wasn't, that was way too much. I know you're extended. Is there, do we receive those by email or do we go find them ourselves on the MSBA side?
We have a whole batch that we, we, I'm gonna be honest, we're behind. So we're trying to
It feels like it.
We're trying to get caught back up, yes.
When did we receive 2042D?
We didn't receive it. It's, it's been here. It's just we're, we're trying to pick some to
Do we have the next batch?
No, we can do the next, we can get the next batch.
It's overwhelming to look at those in four days. So I just was making a recommendation. If you get a new batch, just send them over. Maybe give us an extra week to look at it before it's on discussion. Just a thought. Thank you.
I did want to bring up the video is now on our website. You were today, so I'll tell you how to get to that on, it's on there. Just so everybody knows, the board meeting is being recorded. And then it is, uh, there's a site on our website that anybody that wants to can go and watch it. Okay.
So, so do these, they, does MSBA send them to us? Okay. At no particular time, they just?
Most of the time, a big batch like this is a direct result of a legislative, something that's passed. And then this particular batch is labeled 2024, that's the, the year. And it's a result of all the changes from Senate Bill 727. So we may get a huge batch based on something that's passed legislative pieces. But then, um, some batches may only contain two or three.
There's no rhyme or reason to how they send them.
They send them in the order they're wanting us to update them and we are behind. And so 2025s are coming. We need to get the 2024s done. It's, we've been trying to catch up. And we're really behind.
Make a motion to adjourn and open session.
Let's hug.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose. We are adjourned, open session.